Corian is a ten-year-old fifth grader at the Great Northside Elementary. She is the daughter of Cory and Simone Smith. Her father is an entrepreneur and her mother works at AT&amp;T Incorporated. She has three older sisters who she loves spending time with. Corian likes that the teachers make learning fun. She is most proud of herself that she placed second at the UIL Math Competition category number, in the category of number sense. She is passionate about learning math. Corian has two universities that she is deciding on attending. They are University of Texas in Austin and Texas Christian University. Her major of study will be Engineering or Architecture. And are Corian's parents here?
Thank you to our wonderful pledge students for leading us in the pledges tonight. To your parents for entrusting DeSoto ISD with your students. Thank you trustee Moncrief for reading those. But thank you Pastor Vicente Jr. for leading us in the invocation on this evening. Mission statement will be read at this time by trustee Gold.
DeSoto ISD will prepare each student academically and socially to be a problem solver and productive citizen for a 21st century global society.
Thank you trustee Gold. Item one E calls for our emergency statement. I'll read that until your hearing at this time. DeSoto ISD takes the safety of our students and employees very seriously and guests very seriously. That includes those of you with us tonight. In emergency situations such as a fire, please exit the building using one of the marked exits unless directed otherwise. Should we experience inclement weather such as a tornado, we'll ask all guests to move quickly into the interior of the building away from all doors and windows. We'll monitor the situation at all times and coordinate with the local emergency responders regarding when the situation has passed. Thank you. Item one F calls for us to establish a quorum. We do have a quorum with six board members present. The first item, item one G, calls for us to conduct a public hearing, 2016/2017 tax rate. The time is now 6:38. We'll open that public hearing at this time. If you wish to speak on this subject matter, you may step to the podium and state your name and address for the record and begin to speak. Seeing and hearing no one moving, right? The time is now 6:39 and we'll call that public hearing closed. Brings us to item one H, which is our highlight at school, Northside Elementary. You know, as a board, Dr. Harris, it definitely should make us feel good as board members. If you all recall, last year, Northside was our first school to present. And a part of that presentation, they talked about the Business Law Academy taking that trip to New York. And so it's good to see those photos and hear those stories as they've come back. And so it's definitely good to see that carried out, Dr. Harris. So thank you to not only yourself, but to your staff. We want to recognize anyone that's there at that campus, Northside. If you don't mind, please stand so that we can recognize you at this time. Yes, sir. And we'd be remiss if we do not recognize our Teacher of the Year for DeSoto ISD and our representative of the Region 10, Ms. Megan Mitchell. And I know it's hyphenated McCutcheon who's here with us tonight. So thank you all to that team there at Northside. Continue to do a phenomenal job. And Dr. Mathis did stand as well. So thank you so much for your leadership there on the campus. Item one I calls for citizens' participation. As you guys see, I got a lot of whispers from board members here. Want to recognize how phenomenal our students looked in those blazers, right? So that was mentioned. So I did want to make mention of that. All right, so item one I calls for citizens' participation. We do have need for that tonight, and so I'll read those procedures until your hearing at this time. We have designated a portion of our meeting to hear from members of our community. This is not the forum for complaints. We have procedures for hearing complaints, and those must be exhausted before matters brought to the board. This is a posted public meeting of the board, not a meeting of the public. According to what the Texas Open Meetings Act, all meetings are open to the public and media. The board may hear some matters in executive session, however, any decision must be performed in an open meeting. In addition, we are not permitted to discuss items not on the agenda. Nonposted items may be considered for a future meeting, and no presentation shall exceed five minutes. Delegations of five or more persons shall appoint one person to present their view. You're respectfully reminded to address the board and not the audience during your presentation. First card we have is from Walmart DeSoto Distribution Center.
We're going to do this by way of introduction. Good evening, Board Superintendent. My name is Beth Treble. I'm the Executive Director of Communications. Want to talk quickly about a couple of the partnerships, and then we're going to introduce Walmart this evening. As you guys may or may not have heard, we've had a lot of partnerships this summer. We're going to start with Doug Hunt, Access Self-Storage. They donated 100 backpacks to the Meadows Elementary. We also had Bill Walker and Costco donated 400 backpacks that are being delivered to Moats Elementary this week. Kevin Davis and Susan Smiley with Plains Capital Bank brought a huge box of assorted supplies to their newly adopted school, Ruby Young Elementary. And Ms. Smiley actually attended Ruby Young as a child and still lives in the neighborhood. And tonight, we wanted to celebrate actually two of our partners. Walmart Distribution Center, right here in DeSoto, has a keen eye on safety. So earlier this year, they collaborated with the DeSoto Police Department to raise awareness of the perils of distracted driving. With the beginning of the school year approaching, Walmart wanted to help bring awareness to safe driving and school buses on the road. So since August 15th, a DeSoto school bus has been displayed outside the Walmart Distribution Center over on Center Park, along with a banner reminding drivers that school is in and asking them to drive safely. Walmart also gave the district two banners to further display around the community, one which will notice is on the outside of this building, and the other will be on one of our other units. So I want to say thanks to General Manager Danny Sullivan and the Walmart DeSoto Distribution Center team for their continued partnership, including starting this year with a gift of employee-donated school supplies to be presented to Northside. Mr. Don Eskamia, you'll join me, please, parent of DeSoto. Students and a DeSoto graduate is here tonight to represent Walmart.
So, good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. Excuse me on how I'm dressed. I just came from work, so let me ask a quick question. Who shops at Walmart? Well, let me ask a better question. Who doesn't shop at Walmart? Go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, so that's good. I have to tell you, Dr. Harris, Mr. Sherman, DeSoto is already better than where I graduated from, Plainview High School, because I still don't know the Texas pledge. We just never did it. So when they faced that Texas flag, I said, uh-oh, I'm in trouble. But Walmart, our founder, Sam Walton, and his wife Helen, they, their vision for our company was to be a part of our community. And so as leaders in our distribution center, it's a part of our job. When we sign on with Walmart, we know and understand that not, not only do we work in the community, but we're going to be in the community and be a part of the community. So so many great things are happening here in DeSoto, and I mean, we'd be left out, we'd be just left out if we didn't do what we could with the company of our side. But I'd like to tell you, what a wonderful-looking group, students and teachers. It's amazing to see the folks that, you know, we're going to present you guys with some school supplies, but you can just tell the team that they have over there at Northside is just amazing. And I'll leave you with this. If there's anything that we can do, please feel free to ask us. We have a huge foundation, and we employ over 2 million people, the largest employer in the world. So if we can't do it right away, we'll get resources that can. So I appreciate you guys. Remember, drive safe. That's what it's all about. And thank you once again, DeSoto ISD.
The second partner we want to say thank you to this evening is our local Kroger stores. And Kroger actually across the Metroplex. Kroger recognizes having the proper school supplies are vital to a student's academic progression. Their Backpack Boosters 14-Day School Supplies Drive, that's a lot, was held in Kroger in every store in North Texas. The stores sold school supply kits for $7, collected $1, $3, or $5 donations via scan cards at the registers, and then turned them into additional school supplies and provisions at the end of the, at the end of the drive. The kits contain markers, pencils, notebooks, construction paper, folders, and other classroom essentials. Over $461,000 worth of supplies were donated to North Texas-area ISDs, and DeSoto ISD received 14 pallets of supplies. Each of our campuses received 50 of the prepackaged kits, and over 300 teachers came by on Friday in an hour and 15 minutes to pick up the rest of those supplies for their classrooms to use. Thanks to all the Kroger stores and customers who made this donation possible. Ms. Katie Goodyear with the Public Affairs Specialist with Kroger, who's here tonight to represent Kroger. Would you please want to say a word?
I use this analogy a lot, that starting a school year without school supplies is trying to play a football game without a football. You're not going to have a very successful game, you're not going to have a very successful year at school. And we want to make sure that all the students have a, have a successful year, because while they are not only our future shoppers, they're also hopefully maybe some future employees. So we want to continue to drive that workforce. So thank you, guys, for letting us donate to you.
While they're getting ready for one more photo op, I want to thank Ms. Renee Thomas, who is our Community Partnership Specialist, for arranging both of these partnerships, as well as several of these that have taken place across the district.
Northside, can you wait on your students to speak before you leave?
We have another card for presentation tonight, and that's coming from Henry Charlton. If you don't mind, please step to the microphone there, and we have your address for the record. But you will have five minutes once you begin.
All right. We're going to wait for a couple of more. Actually, this, this is all the parents, these are some of the parents that went on a trip to New York with us from Northside, also with the leadership, with the Business and Law Academy leadership. But basically, what I want to talk about today is about, we got a, we got the Male Leadership Academy, and coming from the Business Law Academy, we noticed that the girls from that program is not having anything to go to. So we really want to push the opportunity to have a female leadership also for our young ladies, like the young lady Corian that's part of the Business Law. Now, that program is an awesome program, first of all. We are so proud of Northside School, the principal, and all the teachers that was part of that. It's awesome. But where do we go with our females from that point as to what academies can we go to? Now, I know it's been talk about doing the female leadership, but we need some, we want to take action now, today. So what can we do as parents and, and teachers and our kids to have that opportunity to make something happen today for them? Now, I talked to Mrs. Garner, I talked to Dr. Phillips, and also Dr. L. We had a lot of conversations while we was in New York about different things, and, and they have a lot on their, on their plate, and we understand that. But I'm quite sure we can put the parents together to make it happen this year. So whatever we need as parents, what you guys need from us, we're willing to do whatever it take, because I have a granddaughter, Jada Charlton, that's at West, and she, she pretty much don't have a program to be part of, and we had some awesome young men, and that group of, of the leadership of Business Law was absolutely awesome. So I would hate for them to get separated from a program like that. And I recommend West Middle School. So go ahead. And, and also, it would be nice to, since I'm asking, to continue the Business Law program. But that's all I really have to say. I had an opportunity, first of all, I want to say this real quick. I had an opportunity, a friend of mine shared with me when we was trying to get the trip to go to New York. We had some issues that was, well, we had principals changing out. So I don't want to say the ball got dropped, but it, it just kind of got lost in there a little bit. And a good friend of mine told me, he said, hey, Henry, go to Dr. Harris. A great man, he will listen to whatever you have. And that's what I did. I had opportunity to go in to Dr. Harris unannounced, didn't have an appointment or anything, and he took out, he said he had a couple of minutes. We ended up talking, we ended up talking for about 45 minutes and just sharing different things of what was going on in the district. But so I want to thank Dr. Harris, Dr. L., and that's what we called her on, when we was on the trip. But you guys are doing a great job, and we really, I know if we put it out there, you guys will make it happen. So whatever we need to do as parents, we are willing to do whatever it take to make that happen with the female leadership, not yesterday, not tomorrow, but today. So that's pretty much all I have to say. You guys have anything? All right. Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure administration will be reaching out and, and continue the plan as Mr. Charleston, I'm not, you're not the only one that has people whispering in your ear, right? So if we could, we definitely want to take an opportunity, and, and I agree, to take a picture with those students who are still here that have their blazers on. Dr. Harris would love to get a photo with you really quick, so we'll take just a couple of seconds to get that done, and then we will move on. There is no card, no. Thank you so much, and hopefully you guys had a wonderful first day of school, right? So hopefully you enjoyed that. Board, that brings us to our second item on the agenda, which is our consent items. We have one item under consent, which is minutes from the previous meetings. Entertain a motion if there be any from the board at this time.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent items.
We have a motion by trustee Hooper to approve this presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Moncrief. There's no discussion, comments, or question. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Board, that brings us to our report items. Item 3A calls for the Star Accountability Ratings, 2015-2016. Dr. Harris.
Yes, so Ms. President, I'm going to ask Ms. Farrell, should she please come and make a presentation on the current accountability ratings?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Thank you, President. Thank you, Board, for letting me have the opportunity to share the current ratings that have just been released. The 2015-16 star ratings came in, and we have just the ratings. You'll see later on in the slides, the distinctions that we usually get about this time have not been released yet. They won't be released until later in September, about the 16th. Do you just remind everyone, because not everyone looks at this daily like I do, but the rating labels that were available this year were met standard, the improvement required, now heard of the standard, or not rated. Those were the ratings that were available. Then we had four indexes again this year. The first index was Student One, which is Achievement. Index Two was Progress. Index Three was Closing the Gap. And Index Four was Post-Secondary Readiness. Those indexes were the same as they were last year, and we will have those indexes again this year for the 2016-17. To meet standard, I just want to have everybody focusing on their minds, you had to have Index One or Two, not both. You had to meet one of those two indexes, but you also had to meet Index Three and Index Four. So three of the four you had to meet, and one or two was one of the ones that you had to have. Index One, of course, is Student Performance. It's not going to go, guys, thank you. And here's what's included in Index One. It's all of the tests across the board. EOCs, they will be evaluated based on a student's standard when they first took the test. For parents in the audience and for those of you who are thinking about EOCs, I often get a question about why a student scored the same score, but one may have passed and one didn't. It all depends on when your child first took the first EOC, and they're held at that standard. And the standard does change depending on when they took that first EOC. So that is the reason I noted that. The target for Index One was 60. If you were alternative campus like our wings, it was 35. This is the same target as last year, but the rigor was increased and by these other examples. Even though 60 is the same, it was not the same. We had a higher passing standard, which has the new progression model. That basically means that the scale score was raised, and students had to get more correct this year to make a 60. The other thing that was added was the Yellow Progress Measure Standards Increase. This year, Star A and Star Alt were included. Last year, they were not. And the inclusion of three through eight math was back here this year. Last year, it was not included as the math standard has been changed. So yes, the target 60 stayed the same, but it is not the same. It's very different than it looked before. The progression model is our Phasen Standard. We used to be able to say, well, we're going to be at this level for two years, and it would go up. The progression model is going to get increasingly, the rigor is going to increase every year from now until 2021, or actually 21-22 school year, that's hard to say. But every year, the scale score will go up, and it will be increased rigor. Index Two is Student Progress. It's basically looking for growth. Did students have growth? So even though they made a 95 last year, did they have growth this year? And in student, excuse me, in Index Two, the changes that we had, the same was that it was the bottom 5 percent. You want to be above that? I've listed the targets. I've listed the targets for each of the, uh, schools that you can see there, in parentheses is what it was for the fourteen, fifteen. So as you can see, for the district, it went up, for the high school, it went up, the elementary went up, middle school also went up. So all four of those targets went up. And included in this index as well was the star A and star alt, the ELL progress measure. What it did, it excluded this year was writing, because writing is the one that had new standards this year. So that's index two. Index, uh, two, uh, construction, again, it includes reading, includes math three through eight and algebra one, didn't, did not have the writing. Um, when you look at ELLs and grade four and seven writing, the index two scores will be based on progress measure outcomes for reading and math only, since writing was excluded. Star A and star alt two were included. And if a student could be calculated, they went ahead and made a progress measure where it could be calculated. So, a summary of all, that is scores of students who take the star, star A, or star alt two will be included where a progress measure could be calculated in reading and math. Closing the performance gaps is index three. Um, again, it has the target of the bottom by five percent, you want to be above that. And then you, I've listed the targets for the district, the high school, middle school, and the elementary. Couple of those stayed the same. Uh, one went down and, uh, two of them, excuse me, went down. But it also included, like the other indexes, we had star A and star alt. And again, this index was impacted by the new progression model, and this one also has all subjects included. And then the last index, or, or there's, I'm going to go through that one. That just talks about the construction, that it's all subjects, all grades, and all tests. This one, you do get one point awarded for meeting the standard, and you get two points for advanced, which is the level three, but that is the same as last year. Index four is post-secondary readiness. Uh, it's, uh, index four, the academic component, is the final recommended standard in two or more subjects. Star A is included, star alt two is not included. For campus who only receive the star component, index four targets were as followed, and they're the same as the previous year. Target four for the high school and the district, I just wanted to let everyone know it was up to, to sixty from fifty-seven in the previous year. So that target did go up for the high school and for the district. Uh, the weights on that were the inclusion of star A, the math, as we've talked about before. And also in this index, we lost the TSI calculations of tax, which is no longer there. This is a chart that shows the DISD two thousand fifteen, sixteen accountability ratings. Has the district and then the elementaries, the middle schools, and the high school, as well as the wings, all the way down. It shows you their scores through the indexes. Um, the elementary, middle schools, uh, will be eligible for the math distinctions again this year. Uh, last year, since math was excluded, we weren't eligible for that. Um, we also have been told from TEA that there will be few changes for the sixteen, seventeen school year, will be basically identical to what we had this year with the change in progression model. Uh, then after that, uh, we'll see if, uh, the A through S system continues in its current Additional information, campuses, Metas set their SMART goals based on preliminary data. Uh, campuses will disaggregate data for all indexes to set, uh, goals for their plans in the CIP. And I'm going to stop here for just a minute and kind of defer to Dr. Ensley, and I'd like for her to speak on what's actually being happening at the campuses as well, and then I'll continue. Dr. Ensley?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, but to sum it up, this year, we're going to be definitely driven by data. Uh, as you know, we're doing the snapshots, the benchmarks, and things like that, uh, because we need to know what each student needs individually. Uh, specifically at Meadows, we'll have a, a focus on that with, uh, laser focus, so that we'll make sure that they're progressing, uh, similar to what they do in specially at where you have an IEP, are, uh, what every student needs every day. Uh, we'll be looking at the vertical alignment for the campus, uh, the horizontal, uh, alignment, making sure that they use the resources that we have for them already. And these resources really talk about, uh, with your best practice, one of the things that, uh, that leads to success is ensuring, uh, that the standards that are readiness standards and the standards that need to be taught at that grade level are taught to fidelity. So we've put some monitoring pieces in, um, in place where we're able to do that. Uh, we've added programs such as reading mastery. Um, uh, the campus principal and others will be, uh, required to attend the AIE conference and participate in other staff development. Uh, the other area is staff development. Uh, we have created a, a survey so that we can know the needs as perceived by the teacher, as well as the needs as perceived by the data, again, being data-driven, so that we ensure that all the needs are being met of the campus. Uh, so basically, we want to do those best practices that are research-based, uh, specifically at the Meadows and at all campuses, so that our students can succeed. Uh, so we want to make sure that, uh, everybody knows what's expected of them, and then monitor it and give them the tools that they're needed. Also, we've added a math interventionist whose job is to work with the students and be sure that those students are progressing, uh, so that we will meet the, uh, needs of every campus. Uh, the campus improvement plans are very important. Uh, so we're putting lots of things in place to be sure, uh, that we're doing checkups and not autopsies at the end of the year.
Thank you, Dr. Ensley. Uh, I think she pretty much summed up some of this. Reading mastery, uh, will be used to improve reading skills at the Meadows. The Meadows Elementary and the district administrators will attend the AIE conference she alluded to. Will also be required to participate in the state-required TAIS, uh, process, uh, and they'll be given priority focus and money, as she's already discussed as well. Uh, we'll make sure that we update you on the campus goals and the plans as they come forward. These are some updating coming dates. We received the accountability ratings on the twelfth, they've released on the fifteenth. Um, we have August the twelfth through the thirtieth for the appeals application, and I've already visited with Dr. Harris, and we're pulling data for appeals for the Meadows Elementary. So that is something that I'm looking into. The, uh, Friday, the twenty-sixth is when the accountability tables will be released, and then on the September sixteenth is when you will see the system safeguards, the distinction designation, and those nice one-page summaries that you're used to seeing that has all those pretty bars and the distinctions and the stars on those. So those will all come out September sixteenth. And then Friday, September thirtieth is our appeals deadline. Questions for me or for anyone?
Thank you. I'm aboard. This is a report item. We've had these, um, these numbers for quite some time, and as has been mentioned, we don't have the, um, final distinctions, uh, as well as that one-sheet summary. Um, however, we do have enough information to generate some questions from, uh, some of you, I'm sure, or some of the board. We'll entertain those at this time. If there be any. Trustee Moncrief.
Dr. Ensley, you mentioned math interventionist. Can you tell us more information about that?
Yes, these, uh, this position was added so that they can directly impact student achievement. So these, this, uh, interventionist is assigned to the campuses, and they, uh, actually, uh, meet with students, the same group of students, uh, for the year, so that, uh, they can, like I said, identify the needs of that particular group, meet the needs of that particular group, and not only that, go into the other areas, because we're concerned about the entire child. So there'll be relationships with not only the student, but with the family, to be sure that the student is in attendance and that their needs are being met. Uh, so we want to try that whole child approach and, uh, give the schools some extra resources to meet those needs. Right now, we have the math interventionist, and we actually, uh, recommended a reading interventionist today.
Okay. Now, I remember last year, um, there was a report asking to, for us to purchase the read and mastery program, I believe, and it was supposed to be used, I thought, at, was it Moats and?
No, two schools, it's Meadows and Woodridge.
Meadows and Woodridge?
Right.
Okay, so, we're going to continue, it's not a new thing, we're just going to continue using it in a different way, or what?
Well, no, it's not a new thing, but because we implemented it so late last year, they said it wasn't time enough, so this year, we're still continuing at the two schools. We didn't, uh, go out to any schools until we get the definite data back on it. So it's again at Woodridge and the Meadows. So you're right, yes.
So, do we already have the data back on it, or, or are we still waiting for it?
No, because it started so late, they said the dark data would, uh, be inconclusive and not as reliable, because we started, uh, late, as you may recall, it came to the board February.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, in regarding the math interventionists, you mentioned that they're going to be working with a special group of students. Are we talking about, since the fifth graders are already gone, so are we talking about third through fifth grade, the new third graders?
Correct. They will work with the incoming students. And this week, they're already on board, so they're actually, like I said, we want to be really data-driven. We want to look at the data and see what students need, so that we can address the four components of the, uh, accountability system, identify those students. And, uh, I think as Dr. Harris has said before, at any campus, if you're able to move thirty, thirty-five students, that would impact a campus enormously. So that's what we're doing, we're identifying some students. Um, they're looking at the data this week, working with principals, uh, making schedules, uh, so that, um, it won't be anything starting late, like before. We want to make sure that the urgency starts now, that we're looking at everything.
So, if you're sitting out in the public, and I know just me sitting sometimes, I get frustrated hearing about data, data, data. You keep mentioning data being, stuff being data-driven. What different are you doing to the data now that wasn't done before? What's different?
So, you know, one of the things that the data has told us repeatedly, that so students test on those, um, benchmarks, so they go toward the end of the year. I mean, it's been consistent, that's been consistent for the last three years, two years, two, three years. And so, one of the things that I think that we've done in the past is we've kind of backloaded things. And so what we want to do this year is front-load it. I mean, we want to intervene as quickly as possible. So as you know, most people know, there's, generally, we look at students and being in three tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three type students. I really believe what happened this year as far as, uh, students go and their performance is that, uh, teachers spend a lot of time with tier two, tier three students. And, uh, so, uh, we saw, as you can see, the data says we saw growth in those students and those tier two, tier three students. We saw very little growth in those tier one students. And so, we want to make sure that teachers have time to address the needs of those tier one students also. And so by having those interventionists in place, uh, that'll guide those students who are in tier two, tier three, to get some individualized attention. So when you start looking, as Dr. Enzley said, when you start looking at, so when you're in a school the size of the Meadows, they're not a large school, so every kid counts. Matter of fact, it counts a lot more than in a, um, than, you know, say, a large school. So now you got to make sure every one of those kids, so you can change the needle very quickly by just, you know, a handful of kids that are successful, uh, on a, on an assessment, uh, because, uh, it's just a few of numbers. So we got to make sure in those schools like that, that if we're going to impact, uh, those schools with those small numbers, small testing numbers, we got to ensure that as many of those kids are successful as possible. Taking into consideration also the fact that, uh, the state now, what they did, what previous year they did not add, was also how well does, uh, our special needs students, star A, uh, star A,
Star A.
Star A students, which before it wasn't. So now, basically, the state is holding your accountability, so now, because you're kind of asking a teacher to teach three different levels, tier one, tier two, tier three, and then also address the needs of those kids who could possibly be special need. That's a lot of juggling for a teacher. And so we've got to be able to put more resources out there on those campuses that have those numbers that may be hired in other campuses, because, you know, different campuses have different units on, on each campus. So, we just got to make sure we're very strategic in giving each individual campus what it needs in order to be, uh, successful. So it might not look, um, equitable across, so it may look like one campus may be receiving more than another campus, but we're going to make sure that each campus has what it needs and ought to be successful. So we're doing more front-loading than we are back-loading.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. Trustee Hooper.
Thank you. Um, first of all, uh, thank you for the report. Um, I think, um, I think we're all aware of, you know, the issues and challenges, um, that we have at, at the Meadows. We understand each of the different dynamics that each of our campuses have. I know that previously, we discussed, um, potentially, um, lowering the, uh, student-teacher ratio with FTEs. Are we doing this instead of, or this in addition to?
This in addition to.
Okay. Um, because I, I've always said that, you know, we need to address the individual needs of students, because again, one size does not fit all if it's one. Um, and so, I've always said, um, every kid needs IEP, um, because every kid learns differently. Um, and knowing specifically our challenges that we have specifically at, at Meadows, in terms of high student mobility and this, that, and the other, um, part of it is, one of the major important things is making sure kids show up every day, um, and that they're consistently there. Um, and we, we've looked at the data, and so that's hopefully one thing that you're looking at the data, and I'm glad that you said that they'll be as involved in making sure those kids are there every day. Um, because everybody who knows where the Meadows is, they know the feeder into the Meadows, and so we know that that's, it's a high turnover rate of, of students. You know, they leave, some of them come back, some of them don't, then they, you know, everybody knows. Um, and so I appreciate, um, on the front end, because I remember when we talked about the reading piece, and the question was asked, you know, how beneficial is this going to be? And the state assessment is in two months, um, for the most part. Um, and so, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, us do, doing these early interventions and really keeping track of these kids, um, is going to root us some progress. On, in regards to the special education kids, um, or the students that receive special education services, rather, um, with the inclusion of star A, but this is something that we knew. We knew that star A results were going to be included. Um, and so, just like this year, we should have still been intentional about our, uh, special education department, as well as our general area teachers, um, being, you know, extremely involved, um, and knowing that going forward, they need to work in concert. And that's not just at the Meadows, that's at all campuses. But they need to work in concert, um, and making sure the kids are successful, regardless of if they do or don't receive special education services. Um, and I think, you know, with the new leadership in the department, um, and the directive of this board in regards to that, um, I think that we're going to have, uh, some success. Um, and so I appreciate the report, I more so appreciate the plan, um, in place, uh, to address those, uh, deficiency areas. And so, um, please keep us aware and informed, you know, how those interventions are going, um, so that, um, you know, we're not, you know, if it's not working, then we need to think of something else, um, because we expect every kid to be successful. And whatever resources that we need to put in place, the sooner that we put that in place, um, the better for the students and the better for the district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper. Trustee Go.
One of the, um, things that, I'm sure there's a rugged reason for this, so I'm asking, I don't know who needs to answer this, but I noticed that on, uh, the, uh, data here that, like Cockrell Hill, as an example, tested eighty-one fifth graders in reading math, and Moats tested a hundred and sixty-nine. So, you may have just answered the question for Mr. Hooper, but does campuses that, and I'm sure there's a reason why, by Cockrell Hill, it's the smallest campus, in third grade and fifth grade, they tested half of the students that some of the other campuses did. So, I'm sure there's a good reason why they are the smallest campus, but they also had the highest test scores. And if they had the highest test scores and they have like one instructional coordinator, they have one, you know, the same number of people for special ed, the same number of people for, you know, special services, it would make sense that they have more hands on deck at Cockrell Hill than they do at, say, Moats or Woodridge, because they have more students. So I'm just wondering if the FTEs, if the, not, not the teacher, I, the FTEs, I understand, probably would be pretty much the same, the class sizes.
Right.
But are the support personnel equitable? Do they have twice as many, uh, instructional coordinators at Moats since they only have, since they have twice as many students? Do they have, uh, Do they have, not, yeah, Moats? That, that type of equitable help? I don't know how else to say that.
So the answer would be, do they not have the same amount of instructional coordinators? And so, because instructional coordinator is not looked at as having a direct, a direct impact on instruction. Instructional coordinators are responsible helping teachers find the resources that, that they need within a classroom. So they're...
Okay. Am I not correct that they help the teachers design lesson plans and additional materials? I'm not correct in that?
That is correct.
I am correct.
Yes. They don't teach students, I guess, direct instruction.
Right, but they are support personnel for the teachers, and if, you have to have, I'm just saying, you have to have twice as many teachers at Moats as you do at Cockrell Hill if you have twice as many students. I'm guessing. Twice as many teachers? For twice as many children?
It's not twice.
You could, and I wouldn't say twice as many, but...
Eighty-one to one hundred and sixty-nine?
I think we understand, we understand the spirit of it, right? It's the ratios. The ratios.
I'm just saying. They, they do have twice as many students being tested, and I'm assuming everybody in a grade level is tested? So if you have one hundred and sixty-nine students being tested, there's one hundred and sixty-nine fifth graders?
That, that is accurate. And we do have some areas in which we do have additional staff for those campuses. For example, Woodridge and, and Moats both have two assistant principals for that very reason.
I did not know that.
And they also have extra P E M S clerks. So in those areas in which we saw the need to assist, we know that discipline typically becomes a problem when a school becomes overcrowded, or sometimes. So we wanted to make sure that that type of support was there. We are still following the same model secondary, with the exception of the high school doesn't have two instructional coordinators, and they have, of course, more students than we have at the elementary level. And so, of course, you know, I would be happy to have it, but we need to be fair and consistent, and put the resources with the children as much as possible, but we definitely did increase the assistant principals and P E M support at those campuses.
Okay. And then another question, it may be for you, is, is Meadows still the life skills campus for elementary?
So, so the Meadows has several life skills units, but so does Cockrell Hill. What we see at the Meadows, more so than anything, is our foster care population. We have got a, the largest over there at that particular campus, that, as well as the number of students that we have moving in and out because of the apartments that sit right there behind the Meadows.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out what might be the issue.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know life skills, life skills is part of, let me ask that question, make sure I know, life skills students are being tested for star alt?
They take star A.
Star A, okay.
And some of them do take, it depends on how severe you are, is alt the test now? Yeah. So the developmental center is, we have one unit at the Meadows and one at Moats. And so those students should be your most severe students, and they would take the least restrictive test, which is the star alt. The remainder of those students should probably be taking star A or regular star even.
Thank you, Trustee Go. Seeing and hearing no one else, we definitely, we need to be extremely careful in that we don't, while we understand, while we understand the demographic or type of student at individual campuses, we have to be careful labeling them, you know, in a way that causes us to have a certain expectation. You know, this week, and especially over the weekend, because I heard it on repeat, right? Knowing that we are a close to seventy-eight percent African-American community, knowing that we are a majority-minority community, knowing and understanding that with the new rooftops going up, that number is going to do nothing but increase. And speaking with city manager, and speaking with the mayor, we see that even now from the homes that, you know, residents have already moved into, it is continually minority growth. And I say, let's say this, this entire weekend and week, you know, me, as I'm sure many of you have heard repeatedly, you know, African-Americans, your schools are in shambles, you have no jobs, you guys know where I'm going with this. And so when you hear that, for me, and I'm sure for many on the board, knowing the demographic we serve, take that personally. And every opportunity you have to, even though that narrative is not accurate, and we know that, but any opportunity you have to play a positive role in addressing that stereotype, you want to do that. And so, while we're excited about what Cockrell Hill has done, West has done, when you look at the high school, and this is all, and I appreciate you mentioning that, yes, the score was sixty, but a sixty this year was difficult in comparison to a sixty last year. To see twenty-point gains on these campuses was phenomenal. Got excited about that, stuck our chest out about it. And when the distinctions come in, I think that we'll all be proud of, of where some of our campuses have, have made, growth. But we don't want to leave anyone behind, and it doesn't matter where they come from, it doesn't matter what address they have, the expectation is that we see growth on every single campus. And so, so my question, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask this question first on the front end, and kind of get to, get to the points that I kind of want us to discuss and, and address, Dr. Harris and your staff, is my understanding, and, and speaking with Dr. Harris, and, and Dr. Rucker before she left, of all the campuses, ETS had an issue, right, this year? We know that statewide. This was the campus, if I'm not mistaken, that they lost all the results for.
That is correct, and that's one of the things that will be appealing. I've actually asked for those to be rescored today. This is the one where they lost the fifth grade retest scores. And that's the ones that we actually had to go find for them, and tell them where they had been sitting for three weeks, which was down in their mailroom. And apparently, from our understanding from UPS, the boxes were so fairly damaged that they had to be placed in another box with a different tracking number. And so I have asked for all of those to be rescored. They first told me it would be a cost to the district, and I'm asking that they waive that due to that situation. So we are going down that road, and that is correct. It was this campus.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, I, you know, for me, if you tell me you lost our results for three weeks, and they just magically appear, you know, obviously there is some trepidation that I have about the accuracy of those, not making any excuses. But the rescore, we're very much, I'm sure this board is very much interested to see, because you can't tell us that you've got all our results back, and this campus just magically appears, and so...
And we don't know what, and that was my point, is we don't know what condition those answer documents were when they were actually found, and, and they're not sharing that, so that will be based on the appeal as well.
Please keep us abreast of that, the full board. And I'm sure individual board members were aware that called and picked up the phone and asked, but let's make sure that all of us are aware of that. Kind of moving, so, so we'll address that when that comes up. One of the things that we talked about is being present. We expect the students to be present. And, and I must say that in all the campuses I visit, when I show up on that campus, and it's, you know, you guys know me, I just pop up. It's not, it's not scheduled, it's not planned, but I must say that if I show up to your campus every time, and your administrative staff, you have people missing every time I show up? What's happening on the one hundred and eighty-seven days of the year? If you're the instructional leader of that campus, you need to be at work. You need to be at work on time, because I can't hold teachers accountable if no one's holding me accountable. Another thing that Dr. Rucker and Dr. Ainsley will start having these conversations now that you're in the interim role, but Dr. Rucker and I had this conversation beforehand, and Dr. Harris, is that when you guys do your spot checks on certain campuses to make sure that they're teaching to the TEES, to make sure that they're teaching approved documents, that this was one campus that we had teachers not using documents that matched the TEES that were expected for them to learn. And that's disappointing. But once again, if your administrator's not there, who's holding teachers accountable? So that, so my question is, we're data-driven, but we've got to make sure that we're using the check and balances in place. So if the expectation is you use approved documents to teach, then you do that. And I know some of the board has seen, I'm sure those that follow education have seen anytime they put out an example, we know the state test has changed from nineteen eighty-seven. If you put up a third grade math question, it's extremely easy. I think a person with dementia could answer it, right? You fast forward to twenty sixteen, we know that's not the case. And so we recognize and understand that progression, but that only intensifies the point, that these teachers need to be using the approved documents to drive instruction in the classroom. And so, I do have a question about adjustments that we've made, because there's been conversation, we know that this campus is going to be an ISTEAM campus. What impact will that have as far as instruction? And what, how many students do we expect to touch in this ISTEAM kind of setup? And I, and I ask that question because we know ISTEAM at the middle school level, I mean, they, those kids are blowing it out the water, so...
That's exactly where I was going to start, with the problem-based learning, the research, and also our own students show that they have outperformed students in other, in the traditional classes, so we will monitor that. The good thing about this model that we're doing here, that there is a control model, and then there's a model that will, portion that will have the ISTEAM, so we'll be able to see the difference in the teaching styles. So we're definitely expecting a positive impact. Right now, at the Meadows, you have second, third grade, because, you know, in ISTEAM, they're the cohort of the two grade levels, and then you have fourth and fifth grade. So you have those two classrooms of ISTEAM at the Meadows.
So every student in that grade level, did I understand you correctly?
No, that's what I'm saying, they will not.
That's my question.
They will not. So you'll have your, your ISTEAM students in the, a second and third grade class, a fourth and fifth grade, and then you'll have a traditional second, third, fourth, fifth grade class also.
So to the question about how many students will we be touching? We talked about earlier in Dr. Harris's commentary, his point was, if you move a group of students, I believe he used the number thirty, if you move thirty students on a campus, then you're going to see growth. So my question is specifically, how many students?
One hundred and twenty-seven.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's, that's the question.
So we have a treatment group and a placebo group. We'll see what ISTEAM is doing.
Thank you, thank you. And so, lastly, the last point is, or question is, we've discussed understanding the dynamics of that campus. We've discussed potentially for that ACE program, providing a hot meal after school for them. Where are we at on that? It's done?
It's done.
Thank you, thank you. Board, any further comments? Trustee Go.
Tell me, one hundred and twenty-seven students, second, third, fourth, and fifth?
Yes, ma'am, in the ISTEAM program. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for the report. We look forward to having the discussion again when we get that one cheater back, and then we can look at what we've done, we can look at other districts, and, and, you know, once again, we're excited about, and I think I speak for everyone when I say we're excited about the growth at certain campuses, and really across the board, we saw bright spots at every campus, at every level. So we know what we're doing is working, but we can't leave anyone behind, right? We don't want to drop the rope. I don't care if they're here for one year, they're gone the next year. The expectation is, we take care of them when they're in our building and they have our ID numbers, right? So, Trustee Hooper.
Real quick, just one last thing. Are the content specialists also going to be working closely with the teachers? I'm talking about the district content specialist, in terms of working with the teachers, specifically to those who are having difficulty in integrating the TEES in their content area and, and being able to model instruction.
Absolutely. We have required professional development with the content supervisors.
Right. And that's a part, a scope of their job, really, the gist of their job?
Thank you. Board, that brings us to item three B, which is our July financials. There's no objection. We'll take item three B, three C, and three D together. That covers our July tax collections and quarterly investment report, in addition to three B, which is our July, July financials. Seeing and hearing no objection, Dr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. LaBoard, just update us, please.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, Mr. President, members of the board. It's been, it's early. This is July report, so there's not a lot, a lot of information to share. We do have our budget in, we're, we're doing business. There's nothing unusual or outstanding about the July financials. Everything is in order at, at this point. The tax collections, once again, as we've talked about every year, our, our fiscal year starts in July, the tax collection year starts in October. So you'll notice that the current year levy is ninety-eight point three seven, that is your two thousand and fifteen levy. We're currently in our two thousand and sixteen levy, which is, which is very, very small at this point. We're excited about the fact that they do have two months of collections left, and we're already at our target of ninety-eight percent. This, we're a little bit behind, but when you get into the hundreds of percents, it's, it's dollars, very few dollars difference. On your quarterly investment report, we're finally starting to see a little bit of increase in the tax rate, the interest rates. Last year at this time, we were at about point two seven, twenty-seven basis points. This time, we're in the forties on our collections, so while it's still not anything to, any great shakes, it is a little bit higher. This quarter, we did outperform the ninety-day treasuries, the ninety-day governments. The treasuries for ninety days are about three point three zero, so we were at about sixteen basis points higher. Basically, that turns, that's, like I said, that's, you know, a million dollars over a year, that's about sixteen hundred dollars. But we do have quite a bit invested right now, and because of our large fund balance and our debt service has just come in, so everything is looking good on that. We, we do, we are looking at moving some of our construction funds into some longer-term vehicles, some CDs going out a year on some of the construction funds that we have available to us that are not going to be spent. And like I say, having a larger fund balance gives us a little bit more options on our cash flow, to even take some of our general funds out to maybe a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days before it's going to be needed at the end of the year when we start utilizing some of that fund balance. So we're excited about that, and that being able to get up around the sixty or seventy basis points, start narrowing in on that, on that, that one percent. We're not looking forward to any major changes with all the world events right now in the economy and things like that. We're not looking for any major changes from the feds, and they typically don't do anything in the, the last quarters of the year anyway. So we anticipate it staying right there, so we're just going to have to do our best to try to maximize the funds we have available and the investment opportunities that we have. And those are your three reports, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. LaBoard. Board, this is a standard report item. Had some time to look through it, but entertain any questions, comments, or discussion if there be any. Seeing and hearing none, that brings us to item three E, which is our annual membership retainer for legal services. Dr. Harris.
Mr. President and Board, as, as you know, each year, we bring an annual membership retainer for legal services, and you guys, it's basically just, we, you know, let you guys know that we're staying with the same company. I would ask the board to consider, we have a retainer fee with Wallace Anderson, that we look at having more than one retainer with a separate law firm. So depending on what the issue might be, you could go with Wallace Anderson, or you could also go with a, a different firm. So I would ask the board at some point if you would allow us to go out and look at soliciting another retainer with a different law firm also, so that we would actually have two. But this is a notification to the board that we are doing our retainer fee with Wallace Anderson once again.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Trustee Go.
Yeah, I have some questions about it. I had to ask Superintendent and Mr. LaBoard and President of the board to provide me some information about our legal cost, and it's not been, I don't think the rest of the board has got it yet, but, and I won't bring that, what I've found, but it was kind of astounding. And I, I appreciate what you're saying, because, you know, if our legal fees are going kind of, kind of high, I think it is good to look at some, another, other... I think it is good to look at some, another, other alternatives. Make me, make sure I understand this. This is for the $1,000 retainer.
Yeah, it's, it's just a retainer, it's a retainer fee. And as you can look and see, you know, that, you know, there's some benefits. You get a prescription here for a newsletter and some other things. It really does nothing as far as cost goes, nothing for its cost. So it's just some kind of fringe benefits that you get. I believe what will impact costs, competition impacts costs. So if you've got two retainers out there, now you can say, you know what, I think this time I'll go with this company. Now you can impact costs. A retainer does nothing for you, quite honestly, other than, you know, those fringe benefits that you see that they offer here. If you want to get priced down, you create competition.
Right. Yeah, I think a thousand a year wouldn't get you very far.
Not with an attorney.
With an attorney's. We're not looking at you. But I, I, I do, I think that's good. And also, I'd like to kind of go down a road of, I'd like to see what our, our costs are. I mean, I know, you know, we've got, I asked for three years, and they were very different. And I think it'd be good for us as a board to look at it and see where those costs are and see if we can do something about them. Of course, we can't do anything in the past, but you certainly might be able to in the future. I'd like to leave that kind of on the table to do that, whenever you can do that with, for us. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Board, the, the report to trustee Hall's point, he did submit that. And so Dr. Harris has said he'll share that with everyone. I know we want to make sure that Mr. Hall got everything he wanted in the original report before we submitted it to everyone. You know, my, my, I understand that, that getting additional pricing is good. Just make sure that you bring us someone the same caliber and quality, if not, you know, better. And, and kind of to trustee Hall's point, you know, now that we've hired a Harvard Law grad, right? Hopefully, that will cut down on a lot of this additional spending that we saw. And I'll leave it at that. Yeah. All right, seeing no further comments, questions, discussion. That brings us to item 3F, which is employment's resignations. Dr. Harris.
Yeah, Mr. President and Board, this is our standard report. As you can see, we've, we're up and, and running. And honestly, you know, we're, we're at a better place than we've ever been as far as employees in the district in a long time. So very pleased with where we are right now and the progress that's been made. Hats off to our HR department, Dr. Phillips, for ensuring that we had certified teachers in, in all of our classrooms and starting off the school year. So thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Board. This is a standard report item. We'll entertain questions, comments, discussion. Trustee Daniel.
Trustee Gold and I were in three schools today. And in one of the schools, we saw a substitute. And we asked, why were we starting the first day with substitute? And we found out that we did not have enough students for all the full-time teacher units that we needed. And the full-time teacher unit that we don't have, that we have a substitute for, is reading. And I find that totally unacceptable.
Which campus are you referring to?
West.
That FT has already been requested. It was requested last week. It's under review.
So you're saying you had too many?
It was submitted last week.
We didn't have enough students for the additional teacher, but we have enough students for an SAT prep teacher, which in my opinion, in the eighth grade, is not as important as a reading teacher.
That didn't sound right.
No, what I'd like to do is I'd like to sit down with Ms. Daniel, and we can review that together because I'm not really sure if you have enrollment numbers, the accurate numbers.
Well, Ms. Gold and I were both there, and we both heard the same thing.
Right, but...
You talked to the teacher?
We talked to the principal.
But I think we need to look at the enrollment numbers. Let's, let's look at the numbers. We'll look at them and we'll go from there.
We need a reading teacher.
Absolutely. It's been requested.
Yesterday.
I agree. I don't, I don't disagree with you. It's been requested.
Well, I know it's been requested, but I want us to get one. I don't want us to put it off.
Thank you. So you guys will sit down and kind of talk about that, discuss that. Definitely, I want to echo the sentiments of, of Dr. Harris. We are a lot, we are far, you know, beyond where we were the last year, the year before, and, you know, in hiring. And so I got a call from a principal over at Duncanville High School, and they're still looking for core teachers at the high school. And, and so they're stressing out, so we know that the field is, is small and it's shrinking. So just be aggressive in hiring qualified candidates to be in our classrooms. So thank you so much for that. That brings us to our fourth item, which is our action items. We do have one action item tonight, which is to consider ordinance setting of the 2016 tax rate. Dr. Harris.
Mr. President and Board, I'm going to read this, but I want to remind the board, there is no change, absolutely no change, in the tax rate. I know there's, it has to read a certain way by law. And so I'm going to be real clear about that before I even read it, and then I'll reemphasize it again once I read it, because you understand. So the tax rate is, the tax rate required to support the 2016-17 budget as adopted by the Board of Trustees is $1.46 per $100 taxable value. The breakdown of the $1.46 tax rate is as follows. $1.17 for maintenance and operation rates, 29 cents interest and seeking, which is our debt rate. The district's tax rollback rate for 2016-2017 is 1.482938 per $100 taxable value. The notice of public meeting to discuss proposed tax rate was published in accordance with state regulations. It contains a comparison of proposed rates with last year's rates, a comparison of proposed levy with last year's levy on an average residence, the district rollback rate, and the fund balance. A public hearing on the proposed 2016-17 tax rate was held prior to this agenda item. The recommendation is adopt the audience setting 2016 tax rate of $1.46 per $100 taxable value. I would request, Mr. President and Board, that a motion be made that you would move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate per $100 valuation of $1.17 for maintenance and operations and 29 cents for interest and seeking for a total tax rate of $1.46, which is effectively an 8.45% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. We'll entertain a motion if there be any at this time.
Mr. President, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate per $100 value of $1.17 for maintenance and operation, of 29 cents for interest and seeking, for a total tax rate of $1.49.
46.
Excuse me, $1.46, which is effectively an 8.45% increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion by trustee Hooper. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Hooper, a second by trustee Hall. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries 6-0.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure no one's confused on that, okay?
Yeah, yeah. And for our public, and, and just for those tuning in online, you know, the reason why Dr. Harris said he wanted to clarify and reiterate is that legally, we have to say ta, tax rate increase because property values increase. Property values increase, and so you have to say that language even though the actual dollar amount is the same. And so I'm sure our citizens are pleased that we were able to reduce taxes for the last couple of years. And so we look forward to continuing to keep our taxpayers in mind moving forward, but also the needs of our students. Board, we have no further action. That brings us to item five, which is our comments from the board. And I'm not going to lie to you, I forgot which way we started last board meeting. Doesn't happen often, but it's happened now. And so ladies first from the gentleman. And, and we'll start. You know what? Our newest trustee, trustee Gold has requested to be last. And, and we will definitely grant her that privilege tonight. And so gentlemen, it's on you. We'll start to my right, trustee Hall.
I tried. Had the opportunity today to visit several schools, real impressed. I didn't go early because there's a lot of chaos and a lot of people doing a lot of things, and I don't want to get in the way. I did, was able this morning to help a student again. Every year, I find a lost student, and they come to me. I guess I just look like a grandpa or something. But they ask me where their teacher was, and I had no idea. But I knew how to find somebody that did, and he was taken care of. But I was impressed. The schools looked good. Everybody was excited. I'm excited. I think we're going to have a really great year. And, you know, we only, I'm going to say this over and over and over, we only get one time and one chance to do this. And we've just got to do it right. But congratulations to all the teachers, administrators, everybody that's involved in the school system. And I'll pray for you. I just want to go teach. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hall. Trustee Hooper.
Thank you. I too got a chance to visit a few schools on my lunch break. And so from what I was able to see, there was order. There, there was, there was discipline. I got a chance to go to, to East. And I want to commend the teachers, the staff, and the school leader. Everything was running very orderly, extremely orderly, as they were conducting, conducting lunch. And it was one of the most orderly lunches that I've ever seen. So I want a special shout-out to, to Mr. Ward. And if lunch goes that smooth every day, we are not going to have any problems. I also got a chance to go to the high school. And so one thing I will say is, the principal was very involved and engaged all day, and her presence was known. And, and so, and, and the message was very clear today in terms of what her expectations were to students and parents, from the dress code to academic expectations on down the line. And so I'm extremely excited for what I think is going to be a very productive and prosperous year for the Soto ISD. And so I want to commend the teachers. You know, from what I could see, every teacher was ready to receive students. They were in their classes, and education was going on on the first day of school. And so if that's any indication of what the school year is going to look like, I'm extremely impressed. And so I thank, again, want to thank Dr. Harris as well as the HR department. We are 15 million miles ahead of where we've been in the past in terms of making sure that we have teachers in every classroom. And so I remember when this list of vacancies used to be much more than the less than 15 that I'm counting right now in terms of teacher, core teacher vacancies and this, that, and the other. So I'm extremely impressed in where we are today. And so, you know, teamwork, as they always say, makes the dream work. And so if we continue to work as a team, I think we will successfully educate kids and prepare them to be productive citizens as well as problem solvers.
Thank you, trustee Hooper. I know we normally go outside then and, but to honor trustee Gold, trustee Moncrief.
Okay, I did have a chance to visit five different schools today. I was exhausted by the end of it all. But I did, I did enjoy my visit. But the one, and I just have to say, because, you know, I just got to be real. There was one campus I visited where I thought things were going right until I walked by this classroom. And just to hear the way the teacher spoke to the children, I've already mentioned it to the administration, but I just put it out there for the public. I mean, that is just not the expectation that we have for children, especially in an elementary school. I've said it to the own, to the principal at my own school, and I just can't say it enough. Children learn from people that they respect, from people that they love, from people that they think care about them. So coming up in here and talking crazy to kids, it's just not going to work. It's not going to work. It does, it, it doesn't look good, and it doesn't feel good for a child. And I just think, I just want to remind all of our teachers, I don't even know why you'd be frustrated. It's the first day of school. The kids are happy, they're excited, they're bouncing off the wall, they're ready to learn. You know, yeah, I know they're bouncing off the walls too. But there is a way that we can channel that energy. There is a way that we can manage our classrooms. But fundamentally, there is just a way to talk to kids, period. We just, we just, we got to always do better. We got to always do better. And I don't care even if it's the kids at the high school. Yeah, I know we may think some of them are grown, and they want to think they're grown, and they will step up to you and talk in a certain way. But it just bothered me that in an elementary setting, to find that type of voice. And I don't care how good your test scores are, wherever you came from. I, I, that just doesn't matter to me. Because, you know, they all know, first thing I always ask people when they hire them, are you, are you trying to go over to school to be a warden? Because I don't think wardens belong in schools. They need to stay in the prisons, okay? So with that being said, I trust that, as the people at church say, teachers will govern themselves accordingly. And just try a kindler, a kinder, gentler tone with the kids. Because your kind, gentle tone sometimes may be the only kind, gentle tone that they hear throughout the day. And if you got to be here for most of these hours that you're spending your day, I think it makes a difference. But again, teachers, I'm not beating up, beating up on you. I love you. I'll go to bat for you, but I'm going to call you out when you're wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Moncrief. Trustee Daniel.
Okay, I'm going to talk about first the football barbecue they had for the community. That was a very nice event, and we thank you for that. We certainly appreciate it, and it was a good time to socialize with people from different campuses and different organizations, so I, I enjoyed that. The three schools I went to, I think I already told you, were McCowen, West, and Ruby Young. And at all three schools, I saw enthusiasm, enthusiasm, enthusiasm. Everybody was friendly, everyone was dressed nice. The kids were well behaved, the lunch smelled good. In fact, I told two of the principals that I'm coming someday just to taste the lunch because it did smell good. At Ruby Young, I got to see their greenhouse and their garden and their vegetables. And the stairway that was made, the money was contributed by Capital One Bank, and Plains Capital Bank also contributed to their program. Very nice. I saw the new layout for the young... I saw the new layout for the Young Men's Leadership Academy. I liked that, that it wasn't in just a hallway with classrooms, they had an open area to meet. Very nice. I have to say, I hated that ugly orange paint, though. It needs to be marooned, to match their blazers. You know, the trim paint, I mean, it's not even a pretty orange, so we need to do something about that.
Thank you, Trustee Daniel. Trustee Gold.
I started my morning with Officer Snead this morning at 7:10. He was doing an awesome job directing traffic. I tell you what, that traffic in front of that high school is a hot mess at 7:10 in the morning. Hot mess. We gotta do something about that traffic in front of that high school in the morning, that's all I say. I know, I don't know what we're gonna do, but we gotta do something. They were backed up all the way down to Hampton. They were backed up all the way. He was trying to get him deterred, but it was, it was a hot, wasn't it? It was a hot mess. Whatever. But, Ms. Owen McGowan was doing an awesome job inside the building. We got the kids inside the building finally. She was doing an awesome job, everything seemed to be working really well. I stayed at the high school until about 9:30, stayed a couple of hours, and seemed like there was a lot of movement, but it wasn't any worse than any other first day at DeSoto High School. And Ms. Daniel and I've been there a lot of first days of school, and it was pretty good, pretty good. I went from there to Wings, and I have a concern about Wings that I'm going to bring up. There were only, as far as I could tell today, there were only 55 students enrolled at Wings. There used to be at least, the capacity for Wings was 105, and so, from my estimation, last year, we started low. In the past, in the past, when I was in charge, we started with 105 every year. Last year, we only started with 85. We went down to about 65 during the year. This year, we're starting with 65, and if I estimate right, that's about $250,000 we're going to be losing if they don't enroll more students. From what I've been told, they have stacks of students who want, of folders of students who want in the building. I don't understand why they're not enrolling those students who want to be involved in that program. So, just ask you to check into that. And then I went to DAEP, and things were going great at DAEP. Ms. Daniel and I met up at Ruby Young, and Mr. Oliver and Ms. Fleming were doing an awesome job, awesome job over there getting Ruby Young together. We visited with Ms. Wallace for quite a while, and Ms. Bell and Ms. Alexander, and I give a big shout-out to those three teachers, they were really, really good. What? Is that not, is it not Ms. Fleming? What?
Oh, they, they were just saying, mention Mr. Gucci for doing traffic duty, that's probably what they were talking about.
Uh, Mr. Gucci. We did, yes.
We saw several retired teachers who were volunteering.
Yes. Ms., oh, if you didn't see Ms. Witt today, did you see Ms. Witt today? She cracked us up. Ms. Witt was a hoot. She was the...
First-day ferry.
First-day ferry, yes. But you had to see the outfit to understand, first-day ferry, it was scary. West, we visited with Mr. McBride for quite a while, entered the Mayor Leadership Academy, and then we saw Mr. Johnson at McCowen, and we went to lunch with the students at McCowen, and they were doing an awesome job of controlling lunch. And it did look really, looked good, and it smelled good. We were impressed, so. It, I, I loved today. I absolutely loved it. First time in my educational career that I was able to visit all those campuses. I visited six, I have to one. Visited six, and I had so much fun seeing old friends, and students, and children and grandchildren of my friends that were in the hallway, that I could tell them, hi, and how are you doing today? It was a great day. I absolutely loved it. So, today was a good day. I did attend the community barbecue. I went to the band, meet the band, and sat in the parking lot in the downport, and then found out that it had been canceled, so I went home, so that was good. Went to, on the campus tour on Sunday, and thank you, Dr. Harris, that was a lot of fun, seeing those campuses on Sunday. It's a good time. And the advocacy council meeting that I went to on Monday, the 15th, I have some concerns about some of the comments that were made at that advocacy council, thank you, thank you, let me say that real fast, meeting, and I do want to, I think that we need to visit as a board, Dr. Harris, about some of those concerns that were brought to that council meeting, so, whenever that can be put on the agenda. And then, convocation, and I have some comments about convocation, but I'm going to wait till next time if I can table that, and I want to address some issues about convocation in, in the future, with either one of you, or...
Yeah, Trustee Gold, as you know, we, we, they have cell phone numbers, email addresses, and, and we can definitely set a time to meet with administration and Board, as we all know, and, and hopefully, we all feel comfortable enough, as, as we've had somebody speak already. If you show up at the administration building, you have to speak to someone, especially being a Board member, you'll speak with that person. So, we definitely, Dr. Harris, you guys make sure you get with Trustee Gold, and any concern that she has, definitely meet with her. And then, for the items that do affect the Board, then we definitely need to address those as a collective body, if it warrants that. So, please, make sure, and let's be, let's be proactive with that. Trustee Gold has, has mentioned a few things. Dr. Harris, putting on your to-do list to contact her tomorrow, or, you know, right after this meeting, so you guys can discuss further her concerns, and she can be heard with regards to those. All right? Dr. Harris.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Gold, you said you're gonna be my thorn in my side, but I only met with you once, so I'm waiting for that thorn to start pricking me. I don't mind it at all. But since, since you put it out there, you know, we do have a community advocacy group, and one of the reasons why we ask community to come and talk to us, because we realize that we are not a perfect school district. And also, I realize that when I have coffee and conversations, and when I have the community advisory group, that most times, it's personal experiences, and so, and we're all right with personal experiences, because personal experiences can also sometime be generalized. Sometime, they're not generalized, so, we, we always are striving to get better, so we appreciate that. Let me just say this also, since there's been a request out there about, you know, starting a program also, and oftentimes, I have to remind the Board, I actually had a chance to sit down with one of our Board members just recently, last week, and just reminding us of where we come from. So, there was a time in the district, Ms. Gold, I remind you that people forget this, that our tax rate in DeSoto ISD was $1.79. That meant that you had plenty of income to do whatever you wanted to do. Unfortunately, that has gone down, and, for whatever reason, district is, demographic has changed a little bit, and so, which mean you didn't have the revenue to do what you want to do, so you, you, I'm not a Harvard grad-graduate, but I know that if you are taking out more money than you're putting into something, then eventually, something's gotta give. The other thing is, is that, even if we don't make adjustments where we need to make adjustments, students still keep coming. The students that we have coming into Soto right now, will still be coming into DeSoto, and so, you're having to do the same thing with less. And I, I just really wish people would really understand that concept. It's a pretty simple concept, that you really have to make adjustments. We're, we're finally at a point, as you heard Ms. LeBois say, that we have a fund balance where now you can do some creative things. You couldn't even do creative things with interventionists. You couldn't do it. You did not have the revenue in order to do that. As you remember, most of our revenue has been built upon trying to do creative things with grants. And so, we're finally getting to a place to where we can do some of those things. And let me just say this, I say hats off to the teachers, because they, most of them, some of them have not hung in there, but most of them have really hung in there and understood what the process is. And so, hats off to those who, who have done that. But I think sometime, we don't get the story quite right, for whatever reason, and so, hopefully, as people start to understand, and we share more information, they'll understand exactly the roller coaster that we've been on as a district, and as we make that turn, being able to have the revenue and the resources that we need in order to, quite honestly, get more things into place that will have an impact, a direct impact on instruction. Because if you don't have kids, you don't have revenue, because we are a rooftop school district. We are not a business school district. We are rooftop. That's, that's, that's what we are. So, we're not getting any revenue necessarily from the Walmarts and things like that, big industrial, Industrial Park is not a part of DeSoto ISD. We are rooftops. So, rooftop means if you don't have students, you don't have revenue. That's, that's the bottom line. So, you know, as we get better at that, and, and being able to make adjustments, we can also be able to put more resources and revenues in, in the classroom, because whatever you put in place, you gotta be able to sustain it. Because if you can't sustain it, it only becomes a Band-Aid. And a Band-Aid is only gonna last so long, so. But I do appreciate the Board understanding that, and going through that process, and getting our teachers' raises and benefits that they need for their families, and making adjustments along the way, so I do appreciate the Board for doing that. And just as a reminder, we do have a game this Friday night versus Jesuit, which should be a pretty intense, pretty intense game. It's, it's not a rivalry, but they're pretty good, from what I understand, so it should be an exciting, exciting game on Friday night, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Typically, you know, Board comments, we'll discuss things that we've done in the previous two weeks since we last met, as well as upcoming items that we'll be doing of community interests so that the public understands and knows what's going on in DeSoto ISD, as well as knows what roles we're taking and actively being engaged in, what the ISD is doing. And, and so, in that vein, as y'all know, I normally try not to say anything, but I will say this, you know, I was hoping last Thursday, the Dallas ISD would raise their tax rate. Hopefully, the Board, hopefully, the Board stays attuned with what's going on around us. They were, they were considering raising their tax rate, which would have directly affected Kohl's, would have affected Walmart Distribution, everyone at Eagle Industrial Park. And for those that may not know, in the city of DeSoto, DeSoto ISD does not receive $9 million of tax revenue that goes to Dallas ISD, Dunkville ISD, and Cedar Hill ISD respectfully. And so, to Dr. Harris's point, for years, we've been doing more with less. And that nine point, that nine million is based on the old property evaluations. Well, we know property values went up 6%. And so, when you calculate that, we're doing more with less. And so, while we hoped that Dallas would raise the tax rate, so we'd go back to those businesses and say, hey, you guys need to put money behind it, and while we tried to get it on the, on the election cycle for this November, to give our citizens the opportunity to vote, to become a part of the ISD, DeSoto ISD, tax-paying base, administration, we need to stick on that, let's just, let's just do it. I know trustee, or Mr. Stripling, who was a former Board trustee, beat that drum loud and clear, and we still hear the echoes. I know we've met with Dr. Terron Richardson about it, and, and kind of being creative, and bringing those tax revenue dollars in, but let's, let's stick with that. So, so I will say that, this is the first time in four years I've been on the Board, and Ms. Levels, Dr. Ensley, we kind of talked about earlier today, and Dr. Harris as well, that I could sleep the night before school, where I could just lay my head down, and yeah, thinking about the 9,800 students we have that fill our classrooms, but be at peace about what we've done, and intentional focus, and methodical, intentional focus of what we've been trying to do as a district. And so, I was, I was worried, I didn't know if, if I was being overzealous, right, and being confident, in where we've been, but just to be on the campuses today, and see what's going on in our classrooms. Dr. Harris and I walked into a third grade classroom of students who, the teacher was speaking Spanish to these students, and they were responding, and the question was, well, how long have they been in the dual-language class? And it's been since kindergarten. Just to see that vision play itself out, to know that you have a cohort of students who learn English, that's their first language, but are learning Spanish, same time, and the teacher moved with them, was definitely rewarding. So, thank you for all that you do. And Board, as, as a Board, we cast the vision, and it's good to check up on that vision that we've cast, to see where we are. And today was a great opportunity to see where we, where we were, and where we're going, and what we've accomplished so far. And lastly, my phone has been ringing off the hook, text messages, I've got one email, phone calls about the principal at the high school. And in most cases, you hear negative. Everyone has been raving about how positive her impact and role has been on that campus. As Trustee Hooper said, it was felt day one. You talk about respect, to see the teachers in suit and tie in the classroom, teaching. I don't know how long that's gonna last, but, but for her to set the expectation that this week, you will show up in a suit and tie, and I assure you that if she has any pushback on them showing up in a suit and tie, I'm sure this Board will be willing to support whatever action is levied on her, you know, on her end to that teacher. But it was, it was definitely well-received, to see the campus, you know, running smoothly, and once again, to hear that feedback. Somebody said it was the female version of Joe Clark over there today. And if we keep that up, matched with her track record, proven track record of being a phenomenal instructional leader, I know that the, I know that we'll be ready to call that the flagship again here real soon. All right? So, Board, if there are no further comments, questions, discussion, at our comment section of the agenda, right? We'll call this meeting adjourned. The time is now 8:20. We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.